The town of Wilmington. And I'll ask for a roll call at this time.
William Maselli here.
Greg Bendel here.
Kevin Kyra here.
Gary DePalma here.
Frank West here.
All right, so everyone understand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no treasury warrants this evening, there's no approved minutes this evening. We come to, what do we got, communications?
Yes, under communications, there is one item the board directed me to provide a response on the application for a facade and signage application. This was part of the ARPA program from Michael's place. And I note in the application that the grant program was intended to provide a boost to businesses along the Main Street and Lowell Street corridor that were operating during the COVID pandemic and that remained open. In the initial application, Part Three eligibility requirement states, quote, "Commercial businesses and storefronts must be visible from the street and must be open to the general public," end quote. Michael's place was not open to the general public from sometime the mid to latter part of 2020 through the present. When Mr. McCoy submitted the application, it was apparent that the language that addressed the businesses, the status, needed to be amplified. And so as a consequence, there were word changes that were added to the eligibility, specifically referencing associated with current business storefronts. And then there was a reference to the word currently open for general public. So it was essentially, that was the intent all along for phases one and two, but there were those words added to just confirm what was the original intent. The rationale here from my perspective is that it would be ill-advised for use of ARPA money on vacant buildings, in part because there was no, would be no guarantee as to how long the building would be unoccupied. I would expect that at some point, these federal dollars will be audited, and the question remains an open one as to whether funding of a property that is vacant would be, and was not part of the grant eligibility, would create some consequences for the town. And that was the rationale for sticking to that program. And I think it's clear that COVID really hit the U.S. in March of 2020. I would note that the last reinspection of Michael's place is dated May 3 of 2020. This is a inspection that the Health Department does during the course of the year. There's actually a couple that take place during the year. Also, I would note that in October, our office sends out notices to all of the businesses that have common victular and all alcohol licenses. The same was sent to Michael's place in October. And ultimately, we received a response back from the post office that the communication was undelivered, undeliverable. So it is clear that sometime between May of 2020 and October of 2020, the business that was there went out of business. I would also note, and I provided some social media posts from July of 2020 that were questioning when the business, when there would be a business reopening there. So it seems clear that the business was, had closed at some point either in the second or third quarter of 2020. So that is, that's the response under communication.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Are there any questions from the?
Chairman, thank you. Just a quick, two points I wanted to make. One is a question, Mr. Hall. So I believe on the spreadsheet that you provided us, there were also other businesses that were, that did not, I don't want to say declined, but didn't meet the eligibility requirements. Is that correct?
Well, there's, there was one, the ones that are listed as pending are in the process of getting certain documentation. There was one business that, because of the fact that they had incurred the expenses before they were granted approval, they were declined.
Okay, so I just want to make the point that there were more than one business that was declined. And I also wanted to just point out for the, for the public at large that this board did not choose these. It's my understanding that it was a subcommittee of the Economic Development Committee who chose the recipients of these. So at no time, and this is the first that we've learned of that. So I just wanted to clarify that this board did not choose these recipients of the grant money. Is that correct? I just wanted to.
Yes, that's right. There was a subcommittee, the Economic Development Committee, that reviewed the applications along with Valerie Gingrich and one of her staff, and then made recommendations to me. And then I ultimately made the decision on the awards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from?
Yeah, through the chair. Mr. Hall, just once again, can you clarify that number three? I think you pretty much stated that. It says in there that it had to be a current business, because I don't, I don't have.
Yes.
Can you read that?
So the.
On the application, you read it.
Yes, yeah. The application, the original application states in part, "Must be open to the general public." So that is, in my estimation, and I think we believed at the time, that that was a clear communication to say that the business had to be in operation at that time. But given the submission by Mr. McCoy, we fortified that by making some changes to amplify that point.
And that Mr. McCoy's application came in in the, in the first round, under that criteria?
Yes.
And to Mr. Bendel's point, how, so there was only two, two other businesses that, that were, one, I guess denied, and one wasn't denied because they put in their own fixture to what they had to fix, right? So there was only just two others out of all this?
Well, so the, the, there was one that I can recall that was denied once it be, once we received invoices indicating that the work had been done prior to them being awarded the program. So again, we have to be mindful that, you know, at some point, the program is going to be audited, so it, we had to.
No, no, I, I understand that. Of course he would, that person, he, she would have been denied. They probably would have just been taken out of the running because they fixed whatever they had to fix.
Right.
It wasn't even a question.
Right, exactly, yes.
But what I'm saying was there, was there more than just, than Mr. McCoy then would have been denied? Were there more than just those two? One that was kind of disqualified him or herself because they did their own fixing? And then there was Mr. McCoy's application? Were there any others besides these other?
Yeah, I think there may have been. I don't have that information in front of me, but I think there may have been others that for one reason or another were not, you know, were not authorized, but I'd have to check.
It would be probably good just to have that, so it doesn't look like, if they were, that there's only one person that put in and was, you know, was denied. And I understand that the denial was because it wasn't, according to that number three paragraph, wasn't currently operating. And then I, I don't know if I heard correctly, so it went to a subcommittee, and then the subcommittee recommended to you. Should it not have gone to the full Economic Development Committee for their approval? I mean, how does that, usually a subcommittee is a part of a, you know, a full committee, and then they come back to the full committee for their approval before it gets, you know, ultimately okayed by you. I mean, is that, is that an issue? I mean, should we find out if that's, that's not an issue? Is it?
I don't think there's, I don't think there's any issue there. It was, that was just the way it happened to be set up. I don't remember offhand whether it was because others, you know, the full committee wasn't available, but ultimately, it was agreed that we would just have, look for a subcommittee of the committee to review the applications and make recommendations. But I don't, I don't see that as a problem.
Okay, I, because I would think that the full committee would want to know who, who was picked, but that's just me. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll go to number six. Board to consider.
Did, did we state who got the, who got the awards? Why don't we state who? And the other ones that are pending, they're, if they get whatever they have to get done, then that will be, they'll be awarded those as well. So there's, how much was in the ARPA fund put aside? It was $300,000 or $500,000?
$300,000, yep.
And so we had one, two, three, four, five, six, looks like pending, or years, for So should we recognize the ones that were picked? I don't even know if the public knows who was selected yet.
So the applicants that did receive money, subject to getting final documentation in Designs by Dawn, 380 Main Street, West Realty Real Estate, 386 Main Street, Wilson Wolf Real Estate, 402 Main Street, Cook's Gate, 446 Main Street, Heavenly Donuts, 579 Main Street, and Forest Auto, 600 Main Street.
Any other questions pertaining to this? Number six.
Six is the board to consider executing the employment agreement between the town of Wilmington and Louis Semaglia IV as temporary town manager effective November 1, 2023. I'll move that we execute the agreement.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Point of order, sir?
Like to have discussion?
With discussion, yes.
Mr. Gordon, we will proceed?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Again, I'm not going to belabor the point, but as I said from the beginning, not the candidate, but the process has been flawed. I'm going to vote no on this fine track. And again, it has nothing to do with the candidate. I respect Mr. Semaglia as an individual. I respect him as a town employee. But I just want to say that I firmly believe that the process itself is withdrawn, and as a result, I don't think it would purchase that I could vote for any candidate at this time.
Thank you, Mr. West. Any other comments?
I have a point of order, Chairman. Chairman DePalma, point of order?
There's no need to acknowledge a point of order.
You don't, there's no need to.
Regarding the.
We'll do it, we'll have public comments, sir, but we're not going to acknowledge a point of order. We're not doing a.
It's a legal matter relative to the town charter. And if you read Section Seven and Section Eight of the town charter, you will see that a person has to be suitable for the job. So the point of order is, you've never demonstrated anything to subordinate whether or not the candidate is suitable, whether it was through education, a resume, experience, or anything like that. So before you take the vote, legally, I believe that you have to pretty much comply with that law. That is actually a legislative act that governs this board and your choices.
We've reviewed this, we've reviewed the candidate, we've discussed it, and that's where we're ending. We're in the middle of a vote right now, sir. So we are going to vote. Sir, we are going to be voting on this right now. I thank you. If you have comments, you could, more than happy to make comments during the specific time.
I believe they're disobeying the law, sir.
Do I hear? Okay, we just got to vote on all of it. Right, yeah. All those in favor? Four, one.
We might need to do it by roll call since.
Oh, okay. We'll do it by roll call?
William Maselli, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Frank West, no.
Gary DePalma, yes. Mr. Smag here. Congratulations. I wish you nothing but the best, and I wish the town nothing but the best. Now to public comments. Mr. McCoy? Oh, jeez.
You can hold it.
No, it's all right. I'm just saying, it's just, yeah, ready, click, I guess, go. I just want to comment relative to the letter that the town manager made, referenced Michael's place. There was no requirement that a business be actively open in order to qualify for funding. In fact, the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, which was funded, which funded the Wilmington Facade Improvement Grant Program, was created by Congress to help all businesses that suffered hardships due to COVID, which my location clearly did. The fact that I had to keep battling to keep my building intact through it all since former Governor Charlie Baker's moratorium of March 10 of 2020, I had a tenant go out of business during COVID, leaving with me to hold the bag with no rent. Then I had another tenant try to relocate, but ran again into financial troubles due to COVID, and eventually, that individual filed for bankruptcy under the Bankruptcy Protection Law. Two tenants defaulted directly related to COVID. Today, my attorney filed the, with the town clerk's office today, relative to the Freedom of Information Act, relative to the American Rescue Plan, which funded the Wilmington Facade Improvement Grant Program on Lowell Street and Main Street, which was created by the United States Congress. You know, once you start the race, you know, you can't change the finish line. And I'd just like to finish up, you know, to the manager, Jeff, for you to put that letter out there that was meant for me, the public saw it first, and luckily, someone forwarded it to me, that was very unprofessional and in poor taste. This speaks volumes on how you do things. It's obvious you're still mad at me for calling you out as town manager. This is nothing more than political payback, and you are absolutely 1,000% biased against me on this grant. You never once talked about the letter of, you never once talked about that letter that you changed from the, from that one word from the first round to the second round. That one word was currently, and I'm just calling you out on that. You never did that, address any part of that currently.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Chairman DePalma, before I give my public comment, can I just ask a question of you? There may be children watching the meeting tonight. Would you be able to explain to the children of the community what pledging allegiance means to you?
Not, I'm proud of this country, sir. And I stand up for that flag, and that's all I'm going to say about it, okay?
What it means to me is, when you pledge your allegiance, you're pledging your loyalty to a country that's founded upon a constitution that provides liberty and justice for all. It's a document that provides for law and order in a country, and it trickles right down to a community. And this does not go for you, Mr. West, but for the rest of the board members, it makes me kind of wonder if you think that the town charter is a yellow bus with the word charter on it. But to me, and to others who have read it, you'll see that it's a legal document, a legislative direction for a town to follow, specifically what we're talking about tonight in terms of hiring a town manager. You can get all technical and fancy and call it a temporary town manager, but at the end of the day, it's a person that's managing the town. Section Seven, which provides for the qualifications for the town manager, shows that he would have had to have prior experience as a town manager or assistant town manager. Section Eight talks about the temporary town manager being suitable for the job. When I look at other town managers around and assistant town managers, you look at their resumes, and they've had education in public administration, finance, various things that have to do with managing of a, of a community. You've never once tonight demonstrated that there were any backing up, such as examination, education, experience, that would demonstrate compliance with Section Eight of the Town Charter, which provides direction for suitability for a temporary town manager. In addition to that, I believe that the board is actually in conflict of interest. One of the aspects of the town manager is that if he has had previous experience as a town manager, he could be hired, if he had previous experience, he could be hired as a town manager, okay? So after a couple days, the committee that you established could actually hire him or recommend him for the town manager job. Now, Mr. Kyra, you appointed your brother to that committee, okay? I think that was a conflict of interest. Mr. Bendel, in a sense, you are an employee of the town as a teacher of the Shawshank Tech. And I don't feel as though you being the town manager's boss, and now he being, in a sense, indirectly your boss, was absent of a conflict of interest. Ms. Maselli, I believe you appointed Mr. Shampoo to that committee, and I recall Mr. Shampoo having to recuse himself from the Analog TIF agreement, the massive tax break that they were given. And so for you to appoint somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Mr. Shampoo does marketing for Analog, so for you to appoint Mr. Shampoo to that board, I think was a conflict of interest. So I don't really think that this is really something that's really above board. And Mr. DePalma, for you to be a leader of the meeting tonight and not demonstrate to the community what the suitability is for this appointment, I think was wrong. I think it, I think it demonstrated very poor leadership. And so that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. DePalma, too, Mr. McDonald, I, I talked to the, I talked to the Ethics Commission, and I went to them directly, and there was not a conflict of interest, just so you know. For the record, I called the Massachusetts Ethics Commission in Boston, talked to the attorneys, and there was not a conflict of interest.
Did you look at a resume?
I'm telling you.
Can you share with the community the background? Any?
You, you made a comment that I appointed my brother, and it was not ethically correct. And I'm telling you that I called the Ethics Commission in Boston, and they said it was fine that I could do that, and that's what I did.
And so if you, tonight.
So I answered your question.
I just want a clarification.
And answered.
Just a clarification.
I can't get any more clear than that.
First of all, I talked about it being a potential conflict of interest, okay?
No, you said it was a conflict of interest, sir.
I think, I personally think it.
That I called up, call them up, call the Ethics Commission, if you like.
So, in other words, you appointing your brother that could actually hire Mr. Semaglia, or vote to hire Mr. Semaglia as a permanent town manager, and then you tonight, appointing Mr. Semaglia without the experience as a town manager or assistant town manager, that doesn't seem a little bit conflicting of interest to you?
Mr. McDonald, I'd like to say one thing. One, Kevin's brother is not appointing a town manager.
He's on the committee to recommend.
Recommend. That's not appointing, sir. It's, there's a big difference there. I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Okay, did you look at any resumes for the candidate tonight, who you just appointed?
I'm, I'm not answering anything else, because we've discussed this, this has been run over and over and over.
Is that, is that too difficult of a question for you?
I'm done answering questions, sir.
You don't want to share with the community?
I am done answering these questions.
How you come to the conclusion that there's suitability?
I am done with this question.
Of course you are, because you probably didn't look at a resume, you probably never read the town charter, and you probably have nothing to offer in terms of suitability, correct?
I'm not answering anything else, sir.
Of course not. There's a reason why you're not answering it.
That's because we're through with it.
You're through with it because you don't have any substance to offer.
You've had enough time now. I appreciate everything you've said.
I just want to thank you all for putting your trust in me here tonight, and we're going to hit the ground running. I have a department head meeting Wednesday morning, school superintendent Wednesday afternoon, and I'm going to publicly say thank Jeff for the yeoman's work over the past week plus of helping me get up to speed on the many issues that are in town. So I think we're going to be okay. And again, thank you all for trusting me with this very important position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any announcements? Oh, excuse me.
Chairman, thank you very much. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Jeff. Thank you, Jeff, for your many years of service, and I want to wish you well in retirement. I wish you a long and healthy retirement.
Yeah, I too, Mr. Chair. If I could, Jeff, just wanted to thank you for helping me out, especially that first year when I was new to the ward and chair, and just wish you and your family, you know, good health and happiness and lots of years of memories to come together.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I want to congratulate Mr. Holland on his retirement, and I thank him for his work in the town. And I want to congratulate Louis Semaglia, and I look forward to, to working with you until a permanent town manager is, is found.
Mr. West, do you have any comments?
Yes. First, first of all, in respect to Mr. Semaglia, welcome to board as our temporary town manager. I look forward to working with you and having you serve the town in the temporary town manager position, and whatever assistance I can give you as a member of the board of select, select board, excuse me, happy to do so. Again, nothing personal, it's just, like I said, it was just strictly a process issue with me. In reference to Mr. Hall, Jeff, I'd like to personally and professionally thank you as a taxpayer, in the years that you've been town, you know, an employee of this town. I think that you've done this town well. As a member of the board of selection back in 2002 to 2005, you were actually the second person from the official capacity that I met with. You and I, I don't know if you remember or not, but you and I had a long meeting. I wanted to learn what your role is. You were very professional. And again, being reelected now to the board years later, you were the first person that I spoke with on a professional level within town government, being the town manager, and you've always been a true professional. And I wish you all the best in your retirement, as does my family. and I wish you all the best in your retirement, as does my family.
Last but not least, I want to thank Mr. Hull. It's been turbulent times, but we have got through it. I want to congratulate you for your years of service to the Town of Wilmington. Like anything else in life, we didn't agree on everything, but you have brought Wilmington forward, and I wish you nothing but happiness in your retirement, and if you're, in your running times, if you're in Wilmington, swing by and say hi. Thank you again. It's been, it's been an honor working with you. Now into new business, any new business? Now important dates.
Important dates, first, we have Curbside Collection of Yard Waste, October 30 through November 3rd. Brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on November 1st. We had listed the Town School Admin Building Committee on November 1st that has been canceled. Also, November 1st, Environmental Protection Agency Public Information Forum, Olin Superfund Site, Middle School Cafeteria, 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. November 2nd, Town Manager Screening Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. November 4th, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. November 4th is a shredding day municipal parking lot, 9:00 a.m. to noon. November 5th, turn the clocks back and change smoke detector batteries. November 8th, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. November 8th, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. November 8th is the MSBA Wildwood School Building Forum, which is virtual at 6:00 p.m., and then they will continue that meeting at 7:00 p.m., the MSBA Wildwood School Building Committee. November 10th, Town offices are closed due to the Veterans Day holiday, which again is on the 11th. November 11, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, Veterans Day Ceremony, Town Common, 11:00 a.m. November 13th, Select Board Meeting, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. November 13 through the 17th, Curbside Collection of Yard Waste. November 15th, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, on November 18th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. On the 22nd, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And again, on the 25th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. November 27th is a Select Board Meeting, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Also, that evening at that meeting, discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification for fiscal 2024, Select Board Meeting, Room 9, Town Hall, 7:00 p.m.
And for the last time in his career with Wilmington, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call?
William Maselli, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Kevin Carey, yes.
Greg West, yes.
Gary De Palma, yes. Good night.
Night.
And all you trick-or-treaters out there, be careful.